All right, welcome. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I'd like to make an announcement to let the participants know that they are muted on entry to the meeting and unmuted as necessary when it is their turn to speak. I'd also like to let the commissioners know that we will be conducting a roll call vote for each action item. Madam Secretary, would you please explain how the public comment process will work and provide the call in information?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I would like to take a minute to share how to speak during public comment tonight. There are three separate public comment periods associated with tonight's agenda. The commission will take general public comment during Agenda Item numbers three and nine. In addition, the commission will take public comments specific to Public Hearing Item number six, which is a conditional use permit associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero. If you wish to speak during any of the public, these public comment periods, you will need to call in. The telephone number is one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. The meeting ID number is four three eight nine two six one four nine. This will join you by audio to the meeting. You will then be prompted by the Chair or the Secretary when public comment is open to press star nine on your telephone to request to speak. Individuals shall limit their comments to three minutes per Nevada Revised Statute two four one point zero two zero. Several emails have been received on Public Hearing Item number six, and these will be read aloud during the beginning of the public comment period for this item. These emails will also be given three minutes per NRS two four one point zero two zero. The dial-in numbers will be repeated at the beginning of each public comment period. Please be prepared to write them down should you wish to speak.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and have a roll call now, please?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blaco?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Missy.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Here.
Commissioner Rossen?
Here.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Anales?
Here.
Thank you. So this is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to provide comment on any item on or off the agenda. Again, I'd like to remind participants that you are muted upon entry to the meeting and unmuted as necessary. It is your turn to speak. You will have up to three minutes. And Madam Secretary, would you please repeat the call in information? And so I'll let them know where they can find it on the website as well.
The calling number again is one six six nine nine zero zero six six eight three three. The meeting ID number is four three eight nine two six one four nine. And to request to speak, you will push star nine on your phone. This information can also be found on our agenda, located on the website under Boards and Commissions, and you would look for the Planning Commission Agenda for tonight.
And I'd like to remind that we will have a specific opportunity to speak on item number six, PCM nineteen zero zero four zero. Do we have any public comment at this point?
Ms. Martinez, Ms. Martinez, do you have any requests to speak at this point?
There are no requests to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing as there is no public comment, we can move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. When you make a motion, would you please state your name? And then we will also follow up with the roll call vote. So can I get a motion on the agenda?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Carey. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Do we have a second?
We'll second it. To Commissioner Blaco.
Thank you. So we have a motion, all those in favors. Well, actually, never mind. Can you go ahead and do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rossen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item five is approval of the minutes. First is the review of possible approval of the minutes of the March third, twenty twenty Planning Commission Study Session. Can I get a motion of approval on the minutes?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the minutes of the March third, twenty twenty Planning Commission Study Session.
That was Commissioner Vanderwell. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, it's Commissioner Peterson. I'd like to second it.
All right, Madam Secretary, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Yay.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rossen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Yes.
Second, motion passes unanimously. Second is the review of possible approval of the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty Planning Commission Meeting. Can I get a motion of approval on the minutes?
Commissioner Blaco? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the March fifth, twenty twenty Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Vanderwell, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, can we please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Yay.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blaco?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carey?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rossen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Yay.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Next is our public hearing item, and I'm going to go ahead and read the item. And before staff's presentation, I'd like our attorney Allison McCormick to comment on this item. The item is PCM nineteen dash zero zero four zero. It's consideration of impossible action on a request for conditional use permit to allow development of a site that is ten acres in size or larger with slope gradients of ten percent or greater over twenty-five or more of the site, which is approximately three hundred and eighty-six point eight seven acres in size and is located at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, in the single-family six square foot lot-stony district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. Just a brief comment on this item. There was some public comment received regarding holding this meeting virtually. The State of Nevada has not exempted or waived the city's obligation to process land use entitlement requests in accordance with applicable timelines in both state law and city codes as a result of the COVID nineteen emergency. What the State of Nevada has done, however, through Emergency Directive zero zero six, is suspend the requirement that a public body like the Sparks Planning Commission have a physical location where the public can attend meetings in person, as long as other options for public participation remain available. The city's business must go on, and the Planning Commission Meeting complies with Directive zero zero six by providing alternatives for public participation, both email and telephonic. There were also concerns expressed about the notice for this public hearing item that was provided. NRS two seventy-eight point three one five subsection four requires that notice set forth the time, place, and purpose of the public hearing, and that that notice be sent at least ten days before the hearing. That was done in this. Similarly, Sparks Municipal Code Section twenty point zero five point zero zero three subsection B requires that the notice set forth the time, date, and place of a public hearing, as well as the type of land use or development decision being considered. Here, that was done. The notice stated that this was a conditional use permit regarding slopes, hilltops, and ridges, which is exactly what it is. I think that concern about the notice for the conditional use permit conflates a notice of a public hearing with supplemental materials or supporting materials, excuse me, under the open meeting law. Materials provided to the public body that would reasonably be relied upon by the public body in making its decision must be provided to the public or made available to the public as well. However, they must be made available to the public at the same time that they are made available to the public body. That was done in this case. Last Friday and Saturday, the staff report and other supporting materials for this item were posted to the city's website. That is how the Planning Commission accessed those materials, and that is how the public is able to access those materials. And so that was complied with as well. In short, the notice for this item and hearing this item in this virtual meeting, while it might be strange and somewhat uncomfortable, is perfectly legal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chair Reed. Give me just a moment to share my screen so you can see my presentation. All right. So Chair Reed, members of the Planning Commission, I am Ian Crennan, your Development Services Manager. This site is located, as mentioned, at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway. You can see it here on the map outlined in red. The site was previously operated as an aggregate mine. That becomes important here in a moment. In July of twenty eighteen, the city entered into a development agreement for the residential development of this site under its previous name of the Quarry. In January of this year, the City Council approved an amendment to that development agreement under its new name of Five Bridges. The two items that will be heard tonight pertaining to this site are not approving a new project, but are the next steps in the process of implementing the development agreement. Review of the conditional use permit and the tentative map applications is for the purpose of advancing the technical analysis of and defining conditions of approval for the first subdivision of land within the site. This request specifically is for a conditional use permit for development of sites subject to Sparks Municipal Code Section twenty point oh four point oh one one, slopes, hilltops, and ridges. There are two criteria that determine if a conditional use permit for slopes, hilltops, and ridges is applicable. First is the site larger than ten acres. And second, does the site have slopes of ten percent or greater over twenty-five percent or more of the site? This site is three hundred and eighty-six point eight seven acres in size, which meets this first criterion. However, the development agreement for the site established that the previously disturbed portions of the site will not be used in calculation of maximum disturbed area. This preliminary slope analysis that you're seeing in front of you determined that a hundred and twenty point nine three acres, this area that's white on this slope map, would be exempt for purposes of calculated maximum disturbed area. If we exempted that area from, we extracted it from the total area or subtracted it from the total area of the site, we're still left with two hundred and sixty-five point nine four acres, which still meets that first criteria or first criterion of ten acres or larger. When they did submit this slope analysis, it also determined that over twenty-nine percent of the site had a slope of fifteen percent or higher, which means that the portion of the site with slopes of ten percent or higher is even greater than than that twenty-nine percent. So we know that the second criterion was also met. So now that we've talked about why we're talking about slopes, hilltops, and ridges for this, the development of this parcel, we're going to talk about some of the standards that are established in the code for development of sites like this. The first set of standards address design, and there are four design policies. Policy one relates to slope analysis, or relates to the slope analysis that we were just discussing. The applicant's slope analysis considered the slopes present on the site and calculated according to the guidelines contained in the code, the portion of the site that is developable. According to that analysis, and as is memorialized in the development agreement, the developable area is a hundred and forty-five point six one acres plus the hundred and twenty point nine three acres determined to be previously disturbed. That ends up with a total of two hundred and sixty-six point five four acres of developable land. This conditional use proposes just to disturb a hundred and thirty-eight point one three acres, a hundred and twenty-eight point three eight acres less than the maximum area permitted to be disturbed. It also is important to note that this request is associated with the first tentative map for the Five Bridges project. The slope analysis and this conditional use permit will have to be updated with each ensuing tentative map application to reflect the total disturbed area and document continued compliance with the Sparks Municipal Code and the Development Agreement. The second policy addresses degradation of the site as well as erosion and sedimentation. The site was highly degraded in its prior use as an aggregate mine. The applicant's plan is actually attempting to mitigate much of this existing degradation through extensive slope stabilization, landscaping, and revegetation. Excuse me. The third policy aims to limit long slopes with sharp transitions. As I just mentioned, the plan provided for this site aims to reclaim the existing long slopes with sharp transitions using slope stabilization benches among other slope stabilization methods. The fourth policy addresses how buildings on the site will be designed to show sensitivity to hilltops and ridge lines. So building houses along the ridge line, as is proposed in Villages two and three, is not inherently sensitive to the terrain or to the visual impact of this development on the ridges. However, development along ridge lines typically requires less grading than developing on the slopes of a hill, which provides some level of sensitivity. Proposed Condition number six requires that plans submitted for building permits demonstrate that homes or buildings to be constructed on or near ridge lines show a high degree of sensitivity to the terrain, including the use of earth tone colors and roof lines designed to blend in with the natural environment. The next set of standards that govern the actual slope analysis itself. On this slide, you can see these are the guidelines for determining total area that can be disturbed. This is pulled directly from the Sparks Municipal Code. This does not limit the area that can be disturbed in any single category, but determines the total area that can be disturbed for the site. We can also see that areas that have a slope of thirty percent or more that are going to be disturbed will have to be balanced throughout the site at a two to one ratio with areas that will not be disturbed. So just a general idea there is if you're going to disturb one acre of land that has a thirty percent slope or more, you're going to have to provide at least two acres of land that will not be disturbed as a balance for that that, those areas. All right. So this next slide shows the table submitted by the applicant indicating their volume of proposed disturbance. As you can see, the applicant is proposing to exceed the maximum disturbed area in some of the categories, specifically the areas of twenty-five to thirty percent slope and the thirty percent plus slope. However, as we had discussed earlier, the categories are not as important as the total area. This table does show that the total area to be disturbed, this hundred and thirty-eight point one three acres, is less than the total area allowed to be disturbed, which is this two sixty-six point five four. The applicant is proposing to disturb twenty-five point six one acres of land that's in the thirty percent slope area, and this will require that they reserve fifty-one point two two acres as undisturbed open space. The development agreement also requires that the, that a hundred total acres be reserved throughout the Five Bridges development as open space. And this reservation from, from this application of fifty-one point two two acres can count towards that total of a hundred acres that they have to provide throughout the site or throughout the entirety of the development. This next slide covers the four additional standards that are in the code for development on slopes and hilltops and ridges. Engineering staff has reviewed the submitted plans addressing erosion and sedimentation and determined that they comply with code. And then in regard to landscaping, areas disturbed as part of the grading of this site must be revegetated to comply with the Sparks Municipal Code. The submitted plans indicate that this is the intent of the applicant, and proposed Condition number four requires that that standard be met. And then areas required to be set aside as open space by the slopes, hilltops, and ridges section of the code are required to be maintained as undisturbed. The applicant must submit with their grading plans sheets that demonstrate the appropriate amount of open space within the Five Bridges development is protected and undisturbed. And then the city has designated certain hilltops and ridges as significant. These hilltops and ridge lines require additional setbacks and protection. However, this site does not contain any of those designated hilltops or ridge lines. All right, conditions or conditional use permits have five findings related to them. Findings C one and C two address conformance and consistency. This site has a comprehensive plan land use designation of IDR or intermediate density residential. The Five Bridges development is envisioned as a desirable, highly amenitized residential community in conformance with goals CC one, which is to ensure that Sparks' physical environment, services, and amenities make it a city of choice for residents and businesses. Goal H two, which is to promote a strong diverse housing market that supports economic growth and vitality while ensuring environmental and fiscal sustainability. And Policies H one, which is to ensure that there are sufficiently, sufficient appropriately zoned areas with the infrastructure, public facilities, and services necessary for the production of new housing. Sidewalks will be provided throughout this development, and the development agreement details how city services will be provided to the site at acceptable levels. And this complies with Policy C four, which requires sidewalks for pedestrians on all street networks within the city, and Policy CF one, which is that when reviewing new development, the city will not approve an application unless city services can be provided at acceptable levels. This site borders predominantly GR or general rural zone properties in the unincorporated county to the north, south, and west. To the east side of the site, it's bordered by Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. This conditional use permit request is for the development on slopes, hilltops, and ridges. Development of this portion of the site for residential use is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and the proposed conditions of approval are intended to mitigate any compatibility issues of the development on slopes and hilltops and ridges with the surrounding land uses by minimizing the visual impact to adjacent properties. Finding C three and C four look for or address identified impacts. The potential impairment of natural resources more appropriately addressed in the analysis for the tentative map application submitted for this site. However, it's important to note that much of the site was previously disturbed as its life as an aggregate mining operation. The impacts identified by staff specifically to this are ridge line development. Villages two and three and the associated tentative map for this project show houses along the ridge lines. You can kind of see them here and here, as well as this area here. The Sparks Municipal Code, specifically Section twenty point oh four point oh one one, requires a high degree of sensitivity to the terrain and its visual impact when houses are placed along ridge lines. To comply with this requirement, the applicant has proposed houses in earth tones and roof lines designed to blend with the natural environment. Homes and architectural features that result in stark contrast to their surroundings will be prohibited. Condition six reinforces this requirement. Additionally, areas of cut slopes must be recontoured and revegetated to result in natural appearance to ensure such areas are not visually intrusive. Condition three reinforces this requirement. In conformance, or finally finding C five has to do with public noticing. In conformance with state law and the Sparks Municipal Code, public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on April third of this year. In addition, forty-five notices were mailed to owners of property within fifteen hundred feet of the site on April second of this year. The Planning Commission meeting functions as a public hearing required, or the required public hearing for this item. Staff believes that the findings can be made for conditional use permit twenty dash zero 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 five, and we are recommending approval. There has been some public comment on this item. We have received four phone calls in opposition, as well as fourteen letters and emails that were also opposed. As mentioned earlier, the Planning Secretary will read those into the record later or as directed. This ends my presentation. I am available for any questions. The applicant's representative, Mike Rayly, is also available for questions you may have.
Thank you, Ian. If the commissioners have any questions for staff, could you please raise your hand and wait until I call on you? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you. Looked like my hand was blending in with the background. Sorry about that. I did have a technical question before we jumped into the public comments. Ian, I was wondering about the finding C one. This is a conditional use permit for hillside development. How are we supposed to consider the availability of services? I'm just kind of curious how policy and staff's opinion, how Policy CF one applies to development on a site with hillside development. How are we supposed to look at that?
That's a great question, Commissioner Carey. We struggled with this a little bit as we were writing the staff report. The, the, the set of criteria that's specifically set out in the code for development of hillsides, I can't say this right, half the time I get it wrong. Slopes, hilltops, and ridges have its own set of criteria. Those are the ones I went through in pretty great detail throughout the thing. But then we get to the actual findings related to a conditional use permit, and there's a little bit of a disconnect of how those apply. And so we tried to give the best explanation of what we know as the becoming project and how it relates to, to the findings that are requested. Because the reality of us saying, well, you know, we could potentially be talking about hillside development in any zoning district, and it would still comply with the comprehensive plan of the zoning district. There's not really a disconnect there, but we wanted to not be so brief as to act like we were, make it look like we were avoiding talking about it. We're just trying to talk about the project as far as we understand it and how it impacted these goals and policies.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other commissioners have questions? Raise your hand. Okay, with that, could staff unmute the applicant to provide any additional information or comments?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi. For the record, this is Mike Rayly with Christie Corporation, representing Five Bridges Development Company and QK LLC. I'd like to thank staff for their hard work on this project and the thorough overview that Ian provided. Madam Secretary, if I could also ask that Scott Christie and Blake Smith, senior, be unmuted as they may wish to add some comments to my presentation. I, I think Ian did a great job in his overview, and we are in agreement with all the conditions. Having read some of the public comments that were submitted, I would Having read some of the public comments that were submitted, I would just like to clarify a few points. Um, and some of these relate um kind of overflow with the tentative map requests that's on your agenda later, but I think uh are relevant to the CP as well. Um, I I think if you look at those comments, um essentially, all of those comments were previously vetted and addressed when we went through the development agreement process um that was done, you know, over the last two years, essentially. Um, we've we've addressed all those issues. I think it's important to note that the project as presented is in full compliance with the development agreement, municipal code requirements, and ordinance ordinances related to hillsides and ridge lines. Um, we are not requesting any variance or deviation um from code or the development agreement requirements. Um, it's also, I would like to reiterate that the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan does not identify any prominent ridge lines within our project boundaries. Um, the total number of units that are proposed um along with this conditional use permit are four hundred and sixty. The development agreement actually requires a minimum of twelve hundred total units and allows for up to eighteen hundred. So uh there was some reference to a thirty five hundred unit project. I'm not sure where that came from, but we are in full compliance with the development agreement. Um, as part of the development agreement, a thorough analysis of the project occurred, including the traffic impact analysis, the fiscal analysis, and the hydrology study. Um, the development agreement then set standards and thresholds for which, when improvements would be triggered and whatnot, and we are in full compliance with that. Um, in terms of hydrology and drainage, uh, we have done a very extensive hydrology study that shows that we are retaining the flows on site and routing them into the existing city facilities. Um, we are significantly improving runoff conditions in all directions from what exists today. When you look at Five Bridges, it's really isolated on its own. Um, the closest new home to uh or existing home to a new home within Five Bridges is approximately five hundred and fifty feet, with the majority being well over a thousand feet away. And I think it's also important that those lots, those closest lots are within future villages nine and ten, which are not up for consideration this evening. So I'd just like to clarify those points, and I believe uh the project applicant Blake Smith would like to make a couple comments. I'll turn it over to him.
But, well, again, Mike, this is Blake Smith Senior, uh, the developer of Five Bridges. Um, I I would just like to uh thank the staff for their report on this, commissioners for your consideration of it. Um, and Mike, I think you touched on all the bases there. Uh, we're here to answer any additional questions that the commission may have.
Hey, thank you. Does any of the other applicants um want to speak? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for questions. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead and raise your hand if you do. Not seeing any hand hit raised, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Um, once again, I'd like to remind participants that you are muted upon entry to the meeting and unmuted as necessary when it's your turn to speak. You will have up to three minutes. Uh, Madam Secretary, would you please uh repeat the call and information and summarize the emails and read them into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff have received a number of telephone calls and email comments regarding both the conditional use permit and the tentative map associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero. Each of these will be read aloud now. Again, the telephone number for call and participation is one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three, and the meeting ID number is four three eight nine two six one four nine, and you will press star nine on your phone to request to speak. Begin, we begin public comment for this item with telephone calls. Staff has received four telephone calls in opposition to the proposed project. The most notable concerns are available infrastructure to support the proposed new development, fire access, increased traffic, and a lack of understanding of where and what is being proposed. The maps were not clear. We will now move on to the emails received. Emails will be read aloud in the order in which they were were received. Bear with me, and I apologize if I um somebody's name I get incorrectly. Um, and I will begin in order in which they were received. The first email that was received was from Ron and Michelle Scholl. It says, Dear Planning Commission, it is disappointing that the Planning Commission is considering this important issue at a public meeting in which those of us that are impacted most cannot attend in person, given the COVID nineteen pandemic. While submission of written public comment is possible, we all know that the true sentiment sentiment of comments being read into the record by an unaffected city city employee will not be understood by the Planning Commission. We would, for that reason, urge that you pass your consideration of this issue to another meeting where the community can actually attend and truly convey the impact this project will have. However, since you will more than likely proceed to consider this conditional use permit, please know that we strongly object. When this developer last came before you on this same project, he assured the residents that are directly impacted that it was seeking to build approximately twelve hundred to eighteen hundred homes and that that building on the ridge top was not part of the plan. How quickly these plans have changed? Now the developer is seeking to build thirty thirty five hundred homes, which by all indications looks to now include the ridge line it assured was not previously an option. We purchased our lot here in Spanish Springs and built our homes specifically for the reason that it was rural and not surrounded by thousands of other homes. We have always understood the progress, that progress would happen, but also understood that the hills above us would remain open. Building on the ridge top means we will now have lost our rural view and lifestyle. That was the main reason we built here. Please consider this impact before approving the request to increase the number of homes this developer is requesting. Sincerely, Michelle and Ron Scholl. Okay, I will now move on to um the second email. This email is from Dan and Mindy Flanagan. Greetings, Planning Commission members. My name is Dan Flanagan. I have been a property member within close proximity of the above-proposed subdivision for over forty one years. I have been asked to send you this email by many local residents listed above that are directly affected by this project. As you know, the subject subdivision project, formerly known as the Quarry, was originally presented and discussed during the Sparks Planning Commission meeting on April fifth, two thousand and eighteen as case number PCN sixteen dash zero zero five zero. Certain aspects of the Quarry project have been recently revised and now is named and now the name is being submitted for tentative map approval under Five Bridges, case number PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero, tentative map and CUP. Seemingly, the overall land zoning uses and dwelling densities requests appear to be similar. However, this highlights a major concern we have as local, adjacent, and near proximity property owners and is the basis of my email to you today. Public notification of the April sixteenth Planning Commission meeting was mailed by U- United States Postal Service to the by the Sparks Planning Staff on April second, and most of the notice recipients received the Planning Commission Meeting Notice on April sixth, which, under normal conditions, would somewhat comply with the Sparks Administrative Code, Chapter twenty point zero five, specifically Section twenty point zero five point zero three, Section B. The reason I had I described the noticing compliance to be somewhat is that only until the end of Business Day last Friday, April tenth, was any documentation, information, revisions, details, or staff recommendations on the PC case numbers, PCN dash nineteen dash zero zero four zero or CU twenty dash zero 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 five made available to the public for our review. Though we fully understand the difficulty and the challenges the Sparks Planning Commission must be dealing with these days, we feel that full compliance with Section twenty point zero five point zero three, Section B, did not occur, and we will not have adequate time to review and organize our comments before the April sixteenth Planning Commission meeting. Additionally, the original official public notice of the meeting states that case number PCN dash PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero was to consider impossible action for the conditional use permit designated as the only public hearing item. This is also reflected on the revised April sixteenth, twenty twenty, PC meetings agenda. We believe that PCN dash zero zero four zero and CU twenty dash zero 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 five should both be public hearing items. From the information that was provided late on April tenth, little or no information was included regarding, but not limited to specifics on how Chapter twenty point zero four, Section twenty point zero four point zero one one will be mitigated. The secondary means of access road, as requested by then Fire Marshal Chris Maples, during the April fifth, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting, will be addressed and currently is not detailed or of a condition of approval on any of the documents received to date. A full updated traffic impact study for the Five Ridges project has not been completed as requested under Items B and C of the March second, twenty twenty, letter sent to the Sparks Planning and Community Services Department by N dot.
Merrily, over your time.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, I really only have three more sentences if you-
All right, go go ahead.
Okay. These are just a few of our concerns, but again, due to having only four days left before your Planning Commission meeting, we likely will have many more questions of the staff and applicant after a more thorough submittal review can be completed. Therefore, that due to the issues described above, we respectfully request that Planning Commission items PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero and CU twenty dash zero zero five be removed and stayed from the Planning Commission's April sixteenth, twenty meeting until further discussions on the project can be completed with Sparks Planning Staff, Related Relevant Land Use Development Agencies, Fire Department, Health Department, Public Road Design, Engineers and Infrastructure Pervaders Entities. Thank you for your consideration regarding our request, and please let us know at your earliest convenience. Dan and Mindy Flanagan. Madam Chair, I apologize. That is the longest email. Um, so I don't foresee that to happen again.
That's fine.
Okay, moving on to number three. This email was received from Dawn Gilmore. Good morning. I live on Wedgewood Circle in Spanish Springs. I am writing to let you know that our family strongly opposes the conditional use permit you are considering for the development proposed for Spanish Springs Valley along the ridge line behind our house. Our yard backs up to Pyramid Highway, and there is already so much traffic that I can't imagine what another thirty five hundred houses would bring. The area is congested and busy all the time. Not only will this project bring more traffic, but it will ruin the views. We moved to this area of Sparks because it wasn't congested, because there was less housing. These developers want to turn our area into California, but we don't want to live in California. We like the open lands, the views of nature, and the clear skies. Please take into consideration the residents already in the area and oppose building on our ridge line. Thank you for your consideration. Uh, email number the number four. This email is from Nick Pennelli. I understand that a special use permit is being requested to have homes built on the southwest side of Spanish Springs from Pyramid to Sun Valley. Is that correct? If so, I wish that you deny this request and keep the beauty of our area intact. What about traffic concerns, the added volume of traffic to our area? Please vote against this request. Thank you, Nick Pennelli. Number five is from PJ Elsner. I'm sharing with you my tremendous displeasure at the idea of more housing going up in the southwest side of the Spanish Springs Valley. I urge you to oppose a conditional use permit. We rely on Pyramid Highway as our only way in and way out. A few months ago, the highway was closed for hours due to an accident which caused major backup of several miles of residents trying to get home. On a normal workday, before COVID, there could be a constant stream of traffic either going to Sparks in the morning or going north with people returning home at the end of the day. Also, consider the people who live west on Dolores. They live in those hills to escape congestion. Thirty five hundred new homes would encroach on the Dolores residents. We do not need more houses in this area. Thank you. Next email is from Nancy and Howard Danner. My name is Nancy Danner, and as a resident living in Spanish, in the Spanish Springs area at the intersection of Dolores and Marie Way for over twenty years and in close proximity to the proposed development, I am writing to let you know my husband and I are opposed to this request for a conditional use permit to change the zoning for a large planned development. I personally think the move to hear this request is unconscionable. The request is not a necessary business. You are doing a great disservice to the residents of this valley by allowing the developer to bring this before you at a time when everyone is focused merely on surviving jobs, food, money, illness, death. Due to requirements on social distancing, residents cannot attend the meeting, and most do not have the capabilities or the understanding on how to watch proceedings online. You should be ashamed that you did not table this item to a time that would allow the residents of the valley to attend and voice their opinions. Are there any members on this board living in the Spanish Springs area that are familiar with the overload of traffic on Pyramid Highway? Pyramid Highway cannot sustain additional traffic from hundreds, if not thousands, of additional cars. If our local news sources are reliable, we are apparently heading into a drought year. Where will the water come from for this development? Are there no skylines in the area that have value? Most of us moved to this area because of the openness and beauty. Even the ridge I see every day from my front yard, you can never get a skyline back once it has been taken away. If I understand correctly, it appears that the conditions and concerns from a previous meeting in April two thousand and eighteen regarding the planned development under a different name, the Quarry, have not been resolved, and the name of the development is now Five Ridges. I respectfully request that you deny this request for conditional use permit or at least or at the very least, table it until such a time the residents can attend. Thank you in advance for your time in considering the concerns of the residents, Nancy and Howard Danner. The next email is from Gregory M. Ely, and I apologize, Mr. Ely, if that is not how you pronounce your last name. It is my understanding that a development which received approval from a previous planning committee membership is now in need of a conditional use permit to proceed. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, this is rare. Golden opportunity to reserve a decision which should never have been made. I, and then he lists his parcel number that he he owns, along with other adjacent property owners in attendance at the meeting in which this project was approved, expressed opposition to a project which would dramatically increase congestion on our roads, contribute to erosion, burden our public services, reduce openness, engender light population, and exacerbate noise. I understand you will hear such arguments with most developments. However, at said meeting, two other critical points were raised. The City of Sparks Fire Chief testified that he opposed the project for its failure to ensure occupants' safety. The dissenting member of, the lone dissenting member of the planning committee maintained the project was not consistent with the City of Sparks master plan. The acreage in question was not used for residents as it was unsuitable for such. It was a quarry as it was suitable as a quarry or some other industrial site. One cannot make a silk purse from a sow's ear. Let's return this quarry to open space, or better yet, make it a park or refuge of sorts. If approval is granted, at least revise it to one unit per acre. But in view of the fact that your guidelines insist the Planning Commission must make findings that the proposed major deviation will be compatible with the existing or permitted uses of adjacent properties and is consistent with the City of Sparks master plan. Furthermore, how would granting the major deviation not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or injurious to property or improvements in other facilities? And finally, how this, how would this major deviation be deemed necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of- and enjoyment of property rights possessed by other property owners in the same vicinity and land use district, and is denied the property for which the major deviation is sought? And granting of the major deviation does not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and land use district in which the property is located. I don't see how it can be done within your stated guidelines. For the record, I also attended February two thousand and twenty's meeting at which discussion involved Washoe County objecting to high density within the City of Sparks sphere of influence. Granting the permit would fly in the face of this, wouldn't it? Please deny the conditional use permit. Thank you. Sincerely, Gregory, Gregory M. Ely. The next email I will read is from Bradley Paul Ely. Members of the Sparks Planning Commission, as the beneficial owner of an adjoining property, and he lists his APN, in the legal name of my IRA account Equity Trust Company, I oppose the granting of the conditional use permit being sought by PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero. The request is inconsistent with the stated purposes of Title twenty zoning and land use controls of the City of Sparks Municipal Code. The granting of the application would not be consistent as applied to this development, which is really spot zoning. Spot zoning such as this was prohibited by the Nevada Supreme Court in Enterprise Citizens versus Clark County Commissioners, one one two Nevada six four nine nine one two, page two, section three zero five in nineteen ninety-six. It should be undisputed that the added congestion would be injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to property, including mine, or improvements in the vicinity. If approved, the additional residents sought will in all likelihood increase the amount of flooded homes from the former rock quarry with poor drainage. I do not believe that an adequate study of the flooding potential has undertaken. It cannot be seriously argued that granting the major deviation is unnecessary. It would undoubtedly be antithetical to the preservation and enjoyment of property rights possessed by other property owners in the same vicinity and land use district. Denial of this application would not result in property rights being denied to the property for which the major deviation is sought because they have already gamed the system by being allowed to subdivide the property into six thousand square foot microphones. Further increasing the traffic congestion, pollution, and urban bedroom community sprawl so nor equate to preservation and enjoyment by other property owners. This is especially true when the adjoining properties annexed by the City of Sparks, including mine, have a maximum three resident, three residential units per acre, fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty square foot lot, square foot per lot subdivision zoning restriction instead of the much smaller six thousand square foot sliver lot limitation. Many adjoining parcels, including mine, have even steeper slopes than the applicant's. Finally, granting the major deviation would constitute a spot zoning special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and land use district in which the property is located. A planned unit development as an alternative could assure maximum buildout of this parcel, but on a smaller impervious coverage footprint basis, less susceptible to the almost certain eventual flooding. It is no oversight that a variance is not being sought because the applicant could not make credible claim to economic hardship. Washoe County is in the process of, if it has not already occurred, increasing the zoning for parcels within the City of Sparks sphere of influence to provide for multi-acre residential units rather than the applicant's already approved shoebox six thousand square foot lots. It is respectfully requested that the application be denied outright. Thank you for your anticipated consideration of this objective. Bradley Paul Ely. My next email is from Cheryl and Steve Glof, Lot Felty. Dear Sparks Planning Commission, please share my public comment for PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero. I am writing to voice my opinion that the proposed development at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway be prohibited from building on the ridge at the northern boundary of their property. I support the Spark, City of Sparks Development Standards, section twenty point zero four point zero one one for slopes, hilltops, and ridges, which regulates development on ridge lines to preserve the city's scenic backdrop and to prevent aesthetic degradation. There are many residents north of and downslope from the proposed development whose views would be aesthetically degraded if the ridge is rimmed with houses. Most of these residents were not notified of the Planning Commission meeting. My husband and I live two parcels north of the notified properties. We would be negatively impact, impacted if houses are allowed to be built along the ridge line. Our view would be degraded and our privacy invaded. Please respect section twenty point zero four point zero one one of the development standards and mandate that the proposed development be limited to the parcels below and to the south of the ridge. I have been told that when Sparks did its ridges inventory, the property at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway was Washoe County land. It was later annexed to Sparks. I believe that ridges and ridges on annexation should be added to the city's ridges lists, and proposed developments on annexations should comply with Sparks Development Standards. Respectfully, Cheryl and Steve Lot Felty. My next email is from Kyle and Lisa Zukowski. I, Kyle Zukowski, oppose a plan from S three Development to add an additional two thousand homes up from twelve hundred to eighteen hundred to thirty-five hundred to their original plan, but also defying an ordinance City of Sparks Development Standard, section twenty point zero four, zero four point zero one one for slopes, hillsides, and ridges in an attempt to lambaste, lambast the southeastern ridge of our valley skyline with high-density housing. The original project should have never been considered in the first place. There is no infrastructure, engineering, or data collection and analysis for urban studies that have been present to the public, or to the city for that matter. The possibility of funneling another six thousand vehicles onto an already stressed Pyramid Highway would stifle the commute in and out of Spanish Springs. My home at seventy-two eighty-five Petrina Way is most likely the closest property to the project, as I am the highest on the hillside. Steep grades on the mountain beside me produce rapid runoff and erosion during heavy rains and snows. I recently invested thousands of dollars to prevent water and soil from damaging my landscaping. Disrupting the natural hilltop would only cause more erosion. We are now in jeopardy of losing our view, privacy, security, peace, and quiet, as well as the very reason we moved to this valley. Please do not allow this project to move forward, and respect section twenty point zero four point zero one one of the development standards. Also consider not only the nearby residents, but the impact this project will have on the Spanish Springs, on Spanish Springs as a community. Kyle and Lisa Zukowski. My next email, we actually received in, in two parts. The Development Services Manager received an email as well as I received an email. I have put the two together, so I will read the two, so it, it will sound like two emails, because in fact, that's what it was. It is from, they were both from Melinda Stillwell. Hello. Not okay with the meeting being held without the ability to come in person. What are you all thinking? Not all people have access to computer skills, et cetera, to express their concerns with a major health crisis going on. Are you thinking we do not care about how our neighborhood will be impacted? As a thirty-three-year property owner and a taxpayer, I am very concerned about the way business is being conducted in the City of Sparks. I am negative on the ridge development, the impact on our quality of life and safety. Melinda Stillwell. Part two. Hello, City of Sparks. So what are you thinking? Making a huge, making a huge decision, decision impacting a whole community's way of life without considering a major health crisis going on? Not okay. We cannot attend the meeting in person to express our opinions. As a thirty, thirty-three-year property owner and taxpaying citizen in the neighborhood, you will be impacting respectively, says negative, and the meeting is not okay. My next email is from Linda Davis. I am a resident in the Dolores slash Patrina slash Marie five acre parcels north and adjacent to the proposed Five Ridges development. Please postpone your approval of this development until we, the impacted residents, can personally appear at a planning meeting. I will not repeat the many concerns of my, my neighbors that have already commented to you. But in addition to the complaints I have read, I want to know where the secondary access to this development is. The plans show one access leaving north, which may connect to the area of Star Hill, dumping an unmanageable amount of traffic into our small roadways and rural neighborhoods. As always, we are concerned about groundwater in the area, impact on our wells, and disruption of the natural aquifer. Again, please postpone. Pyramid Highway can't absorb the impact increase, the impact of increased traffic. Our skyline does not need to be destroyed with future multifamily units consuming the hillside. Best regards, Linda Davis. The next email is from Deborah Walker. I fully agree with Nancy Danner and also wish to go on record opposing this project. I feel it is truly a disservice to the community in which you serve to proceed without allowing community participation. I have had to attend Zoom meetings, and I am sure you are well aware they are not the best way for public comments to be heard. Due to the stay-at-home regulations and social distancing, we have not been permitted to have a community meeting or go door-to-door to gather signatures of neighbors that are in opposition of this. When so many are fighting for life and livelihoods, is this really a time to be hearing this proposal? A very disappointed community member, Deborah Walker. Next is from Lisa Zukowski. I, Lisa Zukowski, oppose a plan from S three Development to add an additional two thousand homes to their original plan defying an ordinance City of Sparks Development Standard, section twenty point zero four point zero one one for slopes, hillsides, and ridges. There is no infrastructure in place to handle the amount of traffic that will be generated by these additional homes. The initial project should never have been approved in the first place without any infrastructure in place. I moved to seventy-two eighty-five Petrina Way for privacy, peace, and quiet, and the view. These additional two thousand high-density homes will destroy all that is important to me. I have gone to great lengths to prevent water and soil damage to my landscape due to runoff and erosion during heavy snow and rain. These additional hilltop homes would only increase erosion and damage the hillside. I respectfully ask that you do not allow the additional housing to be approved. Please respect section twenty point zero four point zero one one of the development standards. Thank you for your time and consideration. Lisa Zukowski. That concludes the emails that are, were received as public comment for this item. I will now, we will now move to callers who wish to speak live on this item. Ms. Martinez, would you please enable the first caller?
The first caller is able to speak.
Okay, hi, this is Brandon Partain, and conditionally, I have two questions, but looking at the ordinances here, appendix A four, item forty-seven, talks about significant hilltops or ridge lines identified by the city, and it wasn't clear in the presentation if any of these have been identified as significant by the city. If they are, then what are the setbacks mentioned in the proposal? And if those ridge lines have not been considered significant by the city, maybe it'd be a good compromise for those that are so engendered to their skyline and their rural view to identify some of those as significant.
We have no additional requests to speak at this time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing and bring back to the commission. Do any of the commissioners have any additional questions for staff or the applicant? Or any comments? Okay, with that, I would consider a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell.
Thank you.
I move to approve the conditional use permit CU two zero dash zero 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 five associated with PCN one nine dash zero zero four zero, adopting findings C one through C five, and the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report, subject to the seven conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
We'll go ahead and make a second. Commissioner Blakow.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Madam Secretary, can we please do a roll call vote?
Madam Chair, point of order. I mean, we have discussion before or in comments.
Yeah, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, my hand keeps, sorry about it, keeps playing in with Pyramid Lake behind me. I just wanted to point out a couple things before, before the vote. I believe that the applicant did a pretty good job of designing this project to reduce the visual impacts, and I concur with staff's recommendations and can make the required findings of approval. Just a couple things I wanted to point out. You know, it was mentioned in the staff report and tonight that there weren't any significant ridge lines or protected hillsides in this area. I think the re, under our code, I think the reason why those weren't, there's nothing in there included in this area is because the hillside ordinance was developed before this area was intended to be annexed into the city. And so I would encourage, you know, our staff, if we can, to maybe take a look at our hillside ordinance and look at other areas of the city that we have annexed and added to or planned to grow into, to look at protecting additional hillside areas. I also wanted just really quickly for the record, if the, if the conditional, if the conditional use permits approved tonight, we're going to be looking at amending it every time there's a tentative map. I want to make a request for staff to make sure that they provide us with an, an analysis and a progress report of the applicant's revegetation plan and the efforts of that revegetation on this site as, as we see amendments to this conditional use permit. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any of the other commissioners have any comments they'd like to make before the boat, vote? Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
I.
Commissioner Peterson.
Hi.
Commissioner Blakow.
Hi.
Commissioner Carey.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Yay.
Commissioner Rossen.
Hey.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to move on to general business with PCN nine dash zero zero four zero. Consideration of impossible action on a request for a tentative map for a four hundred and sixty-lot, single-family residential subdivision on a site approximately three hundred and eighty-six point seven acres in size, located at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, in the single-family residential six thousand square foot minimum lot area zoning district.
Trying to make my screens do what they're supposed to do. All right, Chair Reed, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Ian Crendon, your Development Services Manager. This is a request for a four hundred and sixty-lot, single-family residential subdivision on eighty-eight point three acres north of Highland Ranch Parkway and west of Pyramid Way. As a reminder, planning-
As a reminder, Planning Commission is a recommending body for tentative maps. Your recommendation on this item will be taken to City Council for final decision. The site, as indicated previously, is this area outlined in red, just north of Highland Ranch Parkway and west of Pyramid Way. The city is, the city entered into a development agreement in July 2018 for this, this site. And in January of 2020, that development agreement was amended to reflect changes to the development plan. The development plan had evolved since initial approval of the development agreement as the master developer undertook an additional analysis that had substantive impacts on the site access and provisions of utilities. The portion of the site included in this tentative map is zoned SF6, which has a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. However, the applicant is proposing to use the small lot standards permitted by code in some villages. The small lot standards allow smaller lots so long as the density of 7.3 acres units per acre is not exceeded. The proposed map meets the small lot standards and has a density of 5.12 dwelling units per acre. As you may remember me mentioning in the previous application, this site does have a comprehensive planned land use density of IDR or intermediate density residential. The proposed density of 5.21 dwelling units per acre is lower than the minimum dwelling units per acre allowed in IDR, which is six units per acre, but conforms with both the zoning and density limits contained in the development agreement. The seeming incongruity of the proposed tentative map using the small lot standards and still not meeting the minimum density standard for the IDR land use is due to two reasons. One is the provision of open space required by the slope standards discussed in the previous item. And two, the provision of the primary access and drainage infrastructure for the entire Five Bridges development within this tentative map. The agreement permits between 1,200 and 1,800 total units. This tentative map is the first in what is anticipated to be a series of tentative maps that combine to form the greater development plan that will comply with this unit number requirement. A fiscal, excuse me, a fiscal impact analysis was submitted with the development agreement that showed an overall positive fiscal impact to the city associated with this development. As this tentative map complies with the land plan that is part of that agreement, an update to the fiscal impact analysis was not required. Access to this map, this tentative map will be from Highland Ranch Parkway via Five Bridges Parkway, a reconstruction of the existing aggregate mine access road. Five Bridges Parkway will travel north to approximately the center of the site where it'll intersect with Antelope Ridge Parkway, which will turn west and continue to connect to an existing water tower access road in this area here. This connection will provide secondary access to the site. As stated in the amended agreement, the secondary access allows the developer to construct Five Bridges Parkway as a two-lane rather than a four-lane road. The agreement requires the developer to improve Highland Ranch Parkway and the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway with Pyramid Way when certain triggers are met. The required improvements include the widening of Highland Ranch Parkway from two to four lanes and associated capacity improvements at the intersection, its intersection with Pyramid Way. The improvements are required when any of three triggers are met. Those triggers are, one, a tentative map request is submitted that will bring the total number of dwelling units in the development to 650 or more; two, the level of service for Highland Ranch Parkway degrades below D; or three, the level of service for the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Parkway degrades below E. This tentative map request is the first in Five Bridges and is only requesting 460 lots, which does not trip the first trigger. The applicant submitted an analysis indicating that the tentative map will not degrade the level of service of Highland Ranch Parkway or its intersection with Pyramid Way to the levels specified in the development agreement. The off-site transportation improvements required by the development agreement are not required for this tentative map. There are 12 findings associated with tentative maps. The proposed tentative map complies with the density sta, the first one, T1, is conformance with the comprehensive plan and zoning. And the proposed tentative map complies with the density standards for the zoning ordinance and the development agreement. The comprehensive planned land use designation for this site is IDR, which requires six to eight units per acre. And the asset zoning district for the site has a maximum density of 7.3 units per acre. As proposed, this map would provide a density of 5.12 units per acre. This is lower than the max, than the minimum, six units per acre of the comprehensive plan. However, NRS 278.349.1. E clearly states that where there is a conflict between existing zoning and the comprehensive plan, that the zoning takes precedence in the case of tentative maps. The design of this site complies with the design standards for the SF6 zoning district by utilizing the small lot development standards. In addition, this map supports comp plan goal H2, promote a strong diverse housing market that supports economic growth while, and vitality, while ensuring environmental and fiscal sustainability. Policy H1, which is to ensure sufficient appropriately zoned areas that have access to infrastructure and public facilities. Policy C4, which requires sidewalks for pedestrians on all street networks within the city. And policy CF1, which requires the city services be provided at acceptable levels. The findings T2 and T7, and if, I hadn't mentioned this before, I have tried to group these findings into groups of general impact and category. And so they are a little out of order. And if there's any confusion, please let me know. So findings T2 and T7 have impacts on streets. The proposed development will have access from Highland Ranch Parkway. Trip generation for this tentative map is estimated at 4,379 average daily trips with 460 peak hour trips. Street improvements necessary to serve this development will be installed after the triggers contained in the development agreement are met. Those triggers have not been met at this time and the existing street network, snap, street network that serves this site is sufficient to meet the needs of this request. Findings T3 and T9 require consideration of outside agencies that regulate environmental health concerns to be addressed, as well as other outside agencies. Staff received comments from Washoe County School District, Washoe County Health District, Regional Transportation Commission, and Nevada Department of Transportation. The Washoe County Health District did not have any comments specific to the site. They did provide a comment letter, but it had their general comments related to new residential development. Compliance with the requirements of these outside agencies is required by Condition 4. Finding T4 and T5 require the consideration of available water and sewer. The applicant has estimated that 155.58 acre feet of water per year will be needed. The water rights needed to serve this project will be supplied by the Sun Valley General Improvement District, or the Sun Valley GID, and must be in place in, must be in place or be dedicated with the final map. According to the development agreement, the availability of municipal water for this development is contingent upon the Sun Valley GID and the city entering into an agreement to allow the Sun Valley GID to locate its water utility infrastructure within city rideaways. That agreement must be approved by the city and the Sun Valley GID prior to approval of a final map. The applicant has estimated the average daily sewer flow for this development to be 414,000 gallons. The city sewer model shows sufficient capacity for this development. Findings T6 and T10 consider the availability of public services. Police and fire protection will be provided by the City of Sparks. This site is not within the four-minute travel time standard for Sparks Fire. All homes with, will have to be sprinkled. This requirement may be eliminated if the master developer can demonstrate to the fire, the approval of the fire chief that the dwelling units are within a four-minute travel time. That was probably only accomplishable through the construction of a new fire station, but it is the way we've written that condition. The development of the site will have an impact on Washoe County Public Schools. In a letter received from the Washoe County School District, it is estimated that the development will add 96 new students to Hall Elementary, 41 to Shaw Middle School, and 44 to Spanish Springs High School. Spanish Springs High School is over capacity, but the new HUG High School is anticipated to provide relief to this school. Findings T8 through T12, or T8 and T11 are other impacts, plus T12 is noticing. The previous item addressed the slopes, hilltops, and ridges requirements for this site, and there are no floodplains on this site. The other identified impacts that were determined by staff were landscaping and architecture. Landscaping and architecture for this tentative map will be subject to the standards in the Sparks Municipal Code, as well as Conditions 11, 12, and 16 of the conditional use permit previously approved, CU20-0005. Finding T12 requires proper notice and that a meeting be held. Notice for tentative maps is accomplished via the posting of the agenda and the Planning Commission and City Council meetings fulfill the meeting requirement. Staff believes that the findings can be made and is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council. That is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's representative, Mike Raely, is also here if you have questions for him.
Thank you, Ian. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Just raise your hand. No questions for staff? Oh, Commissioner Pritzos.
Thank you, Chair Reed. Ian, one quick question. Another Washoe County school said that they were expecting Proctor HUG to offer relief, but did they give specifics or did they just generally say it would give relief?
I don't, I'm looking at their letter. Give me one moment to see exactly what they say. I don't believe they gave a, an anticipated value, but let me double check that. They do not give a value for how much of an impact they believe it will have, but they do indicate that they do believe it will have a, an impact on crowding at Spanish Springs High School.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, unmute the applicant rep to give them the opportunity to address any other questions or any other statements they'd like to make.
Good evening. Once again, for the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, representing Five Bridges Development Company and QK LLC. I think once again, I think Ian did a fantastic job giving an overview of the project. We are in agreement with the conditions and I think the comments that I made previously under the conditional use permit item are relevant to this request as well. So I, I don't have any additional comments at this time, but we're happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for the applicant. The, the density with this proposed tentative map seems to be lower than what is, what the land use that you had requested for on this site. Do you anticipate transferring to different, additional units in the future with other tentative maps that are coming to get to the intended density with the land use on this site?
Yeah, once again, Mike Raely, for the record. This is just the first tentative map in what will be a series of tentative maps. So the development agreement actually mandates that we have a minimum of 1,200 units. So you'll see that density increase as the additional tentative maps are brought online.
Follow up, if I may, Madam Chair. With the, the minimum amount of units in the, if, if those are constructed as, as the minimum amount in the development agreement, what would the density of the overall site be? I think it's like something like 1,200 units is the minimum in the development agreement. What would the overall density be with just 1,200 units? And what would it be with the maximum that's allowed in, in the development agreement?
Commissioner Carey, just to run the, the numbers real quick. At 1,200 units, it's just over three units per acre. And at 1,800 units, it is about 4.7 units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. Any other further discussion by the commission or our team? Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I did have a question for, for staff concerning the, one of the, the condition number 15 and fire station number, number six. My, my question is, is, first question is, is how will condition number 15 regarding the four-minute response time be reviewed and enforced by staff?
Just a moment. Let me, I was just pulling up the conditions of approval in front of me so I can, I can look at that. Okay, just 15. Apologies, I've, I've opened the wrong set of conditions. Sorry, hold on one moment. I apologize.
Chair Reed, I believe Mr. Arnalas can, has something to add.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Arnalas.
Thank you, Chairwoman Reed. Armando Arnalas, Assistant Community Services Director, while Mr. Crennan looks for the conditions. With regard to condition 15, essentially, if at the time of building permit, the, you know, Fire Station 6 is not in place, then the units will have to be sprinkled. We would anticipate that to be the case. But, you know, there is, there is that, that this allows for the possibility that were, Fire Station 6 to be moved forward before they were looking to pull, pull building permits on these homes that then we could look at it otherwise. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Carey?
I, I think it does. Thank you. My, my other question is concerning Fire Station Number 6 in general. Do we have any idea of when that would be, maybe, maybe come online where we're at? I know I've been on the commission for four years and we still collect the impact fees and a lot of money's been set aside. I'm just, I'm just curious where we're at in terms of Fire Station Number 6 and fire service in this area.
So we are, again, Assistant Community Services Director, Armando Arnalas. We are looking or starting the preliminary design process for Fire Station 6. We have not identified a specific site yet, although we believe it would be, you know, east of the Pyramid Highway. In terms of the timing for that, we don't have the, you know, we have not collected enough fees yet to construct that station. So I can't give you a timetable for Fire Station 6 at this point.
Fair enough. Thank you for that explanation. I don't have the other questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any further questions? Ian, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to do a tiny tag on to what Armando had mentioned about the condition 15. The, the way this condition's written as well, it avoids the requirements to amend the tentative map conditions if Fire Station 6 is constructed prior to these units all being constructed. If, if the condition was written such that it just said they all had to have fire suppression, even if Fire Station 6 was built and they had four-minute response time, they'd still require fire suppression systems unless this condition was amended. So that, that was, that was a request by the applicant, but it made a lot of sense to staff as well rather than running this back to the mill, so to speak, if, if that was necessary. The other thing that I failed to mention during my presentation that I feel is important to mention is there was an amendment to condition number 12 that should have been made available to the Planning Commission and the public in general. We had written a condition basically requiring the dedication of open common areas to the HOA and the LMA prior to the recordation of a final map. That's kind of impossible. It needs to happen with a final map, but staff had just wrote that incorrectly. A lot of the other conditions get written that way and I must have been in autopilot and wrote it that way. And it just didn't make any sense. And so we, we amended that after the applicant called and said, we don't know how we, we dedicate those prior to a final map. And so we changed it to reflect that just with the final map, we want those things that it did.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Are we ready? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell.
Thank you.
I moved it forward to city council, a recommendation of approval of the tentative map associated with PCN one nine dash zero zero four zero for a four hundred and sixty lot, single-family subdivision on a site eighty-eight point three acres in size located in the SF six zoning district, adopting findings T one through T twelve. And the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval one through sixteen.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second?
Commissioner Blake, go ahead.
Thank you. Any other comments by the commission before we call for a vote? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments um, before the, before the roll, roll call vote. Um, I can certainly appreciate um, the applicant um, and the commitments stated on, on record um, to uh, main, to meet the minimum density standards within this development and to get closer to what the intended density is for the land use on this site. Um, however, with respect to this um, tentative map, I'm really concerned about the low-density nature of, of this, of this product. I'm having a really hard time making finding T one. Um, because this proposed tentative map does not meet the minimum density requirements, I'm really concerned about the impact that's, that, that's going to have on our existing impact fee service area number one program. And, you know, and the shift of the cost burden on the other users of, of I F S A number one and the city taxpayers. Because the commission well knows, and, and we'll probably get into this at our next meeting, you know, the purpose of this program is so that everyone pays a proportional share based on the units that are created from development. It's based on our master plan land uses and those densities that are, that are, that are, that are, that are called out. I'm afraid with the low density of this tentative map, we're going to come up short and we're not going to have enough money to meet the required infrastructure that, that's needed to serve not only this development, but other parts of impact fee service area number one. I'm really concerned about the impacts of lower density and, and collecting the fees needed for roadway improvements, um, fire protection, parks, and the infrastructure, other infrastructure needed. Um, I hope that the commission and the staff will understand how important, you know, density and land uses are with respect to the, our impact fee service area number one program. I had similar concerns with another tentative map that had a lower density than what the land use called out for in January, and I was not able to support that project. I'm not able to, to support this project tonight and make, and make this, in this finding. Um, I hope that I'm, I'm proved wrong. I have no reason to suspect that the applicant won't um, transfer additional units throughout this development and, and meet, get closer and meet that, that the density. But I just don't want to come up short in meeting the um, impact fee that are, impact fees that are collected needed to serve this development and, and the rest of the city. And I'm really, and I'm, and I can't make the, the finding T one. I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. Um, Madam Secretary, can we, uh, we have a motion in a second. Can we please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
I.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yay.
Commissioner Blaco?
Yeah.
Was that a yay, Commissioner Blaco? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Carey?
Me.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Yay.
Commissioner Rossin? Commissioner Vanderwell?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes with one vote against. Um, thank you, staff. Um, next is consideration of and possible action on the uh, City of Sparks annual report for twenty nineteen to the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency.
Thank you, uh, Chairwoman Reed, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, here again this year to present the annual report for the City of Sparks. Uh, the NRS requires that each local planning jur- jurisdiction prepare an annual report uh, for submission to the Regional Planning Agency for consideration by the Regional Planning Commission, then ultimately the Regional Planning Governing Board. And that's what we're going to ask that the planning commission do today is ultimately endorse the report that you have in front of you. I'll just hit a few of the highlights that are in the report, including how the City of Sparks is complying with the affordable housing component of the regional plan. Wanted to touch on some CDBG, Community Development Block Grant with components that the city of staff, the city staff implements in the City of Sparks. In nineteen and twenty fiscal year, the City of Sparks received an allocation of almost seven hundred thousand dollars in CDBG funds. We use those funds to support the um, Community Assistance Center, the CAC, or the Homeless Shelter. We also used it to support the Continue Love Care, which is known as the COC, and that helps people transition from the homeless shelter ultimately into a more permanent housing. And then we afforded some of that money to uh, fair housing activities through the Silver State Fair Housing Council. We also joined some of the CDBG money with redevelopment funds, and our transportation manager will be taking an item to city council uh, in a week and a half to, to move forward with some pedestrian improvements uh, in the areas of H Street, Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, over off of Rock and I, to move forward with some more pedestrian enhancements that uh, we join, like I said, in, in conjunction with redevelopment funds and CDBG. Another component that we use of CDBG is the Housing Rehabilita- Housing Rehabilitation Deferred Loan Program. And that allows uh, homeowners to come in and request loans up to twenty thousand dollars to perform essential repairs on their homes. And then the next component is we also have emergency repair grants. We issued two, two of those emergency repair grants in the, the City of Sparks last year, and that helps people do emergency repairs. It could be a heating system or a water heater, something like that, that's an emergency. Some type of life safety thing. And lastly, the City of Sparks participates in the home consortium. I believe Commissioner Vanderwell serves as a citizen representative for Sparks, and I, and now we have Ian Crittenton's uh, attending those meetings as the Sparks Staff Representative. And the last project that was done in the City of Sparks was, I believe, twenty eighteen, when we did the project over on Audi Boulevard, known as Alpine Haven. Uh, in the near future, it may be at the next meeting, the City of Sparks staff will be presenting that capital improvements plan. They also will be taking that to city council soon. And we touched on that in the report you received uh, in your packet today. More exciting, another exciting component I wanted to touch on is the projects that have happened in the redevelopment areas, which we report to regional planning on. We'll start with the bridges. The bridges was a hundred and ninety-four units that was constructed in Victorian Square in downtown. Another project that is currently under construction is the Deco, and that will ultimately be two hundred and nine units and is anticipated to open or be completed this year. Uh, the atrium is another project in downtown that is being constructed currently and is a hundred and thirty-two units uh, when it is, will be a hundred and thirty-two units when it is completed. Over in the other redevelopment area, known as Redevelopment Area Two, or the Marina of the planning commission and staff has seen a number of units be constructed over there, including the Marina Village, uh, which is, which is seeing some um, commercial being constructed. I believe it's thirteen thousand square feet. And ultimately, we'll see the Sparks Water Bar open up over there. On the east side of Marina Gateway, we're seeing uh, three hundred and eight units currently being constructed. And we hope to see those come to completion in uh, this year, twenty twenty. And lastly, back over on Audi Boulevard, there's three hundred and twelve units being constructed currently. And those are a market, market rate or workforce housing that's being constructed. As I said, when I started off, uh, the NRS requires the Planning Commission to do this every year and submit to the Regional Planning Agency for review by the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Governing Board. We're asking that you endorse the plan that is in front of you today, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, um, wanted to commend our representatives on regional planning for their work over the past several years to get done with the update of the regional plan. Very happy to see the, the new policies in place. Jim, I was, I was wondering about, you know, the new incentives and the strategies that are in the regional plan with kind of the tiering of land uses um, in order to promote, you know, infill and, and density. I was wondering how Sparks is doing in that regard and how our partners in the region are doing um, with promoting infill and um...
Okay, to the, to the Chair, Commissioner Reed. Uh, I don't know of any necessarily, any analysis at this time on how much development has occurred within, inside of the tiers. I believe there's four tiers that were created in the new twenty nineteen regional plan. I believe there will be more analysis as the jurisdictions move forward in implementing that plan. What the Sparks Planning Commission will see in twenty twenty is an amend, is uh, amendments to the current comprehensive plan to come into full compliance. I believe our regional planning commissioners next week will be reviewing the Sparks Comprehensive Plan for conformance with the regional plan. That, that conformance review has a list of scheduled additions that Sparks staff will be attempting to address with our planning commission and bringing forward a new amended master plan. I think this will also be an opportunity to identify what strategies we may implement on our own for the City of Sparks for uh, encouraging the infill development in the mixed or in the higher-density areas that were identified in the regional plan. And I think it will also require um, more of a commitment out of the twenty fifty RTP. So I could encourage the, the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan by RTC. I encourage the planning commissioners to participate in the survey that RTC has um, provided to the public and make sure that your comments get considered as, as that gets further refined. I know that doesn't directly answer your question, but I think there's opportunities, Commissioner Carey, in the next year to implement those new strategies and those modified or the furthering of the previous regional planning strategies from the two thousand and twelve plan.
Thank you, Jim. Do, are there any other questions, comments from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair Reed, Commissioner Peterson would like to make the motion, please.
Go ahead.
I move to endorse and forward to the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Commission and Governing Board the City of Sparks annual report for calendar year two thousand and nineteen.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Carey. I'll make the second on that motion.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by the commission before we um, call for the vote? With that, Madam uh, Secretary, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
I.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Commissioner Blaco?
Hi.
Commissioner Carey?
Uh, yay for Commissioner Carey.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Yay.
Commissioner Rossin? Commissioner Vanderwell?
Yay. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to staff. Um, next item on the agenda is a general public comment limited to items that are not on the agenda. Madam Secretary, would you please repeat the call-in information?
Madam Chair, this is the public comment period for general public comment for items not on the agenda. The telephone number for call-in participation for this general public comment period is one, six, six, nine, nine hundred, six, eight, three, three. The meeting identification number is four, three, eight, nine, two, six, one, four, nine. Please dial now to be joined and use star nine to speak. Or rather, to request to speak.
Do we have any um, any people on the phone?
We do not have any requests to speak at this time.
Okay, I'm going to give the um, a public time if they'd like to and move on to item ten, and then if we uh, don't get any, then I'll close. So um, item ten is announcements from staff and commissioners. Yes, Mr. Arnalas.
Armando Arnalas, Assistant Community Services Director. Uh, first of all, well, uh, primarily here, I'd like to thank uh, the planning commission uh, for your willingness to adapt to uh, using this Zoom platform to conduct uh, this meeting. Uh, we appreciate the uh, extra time you put in to uh, do a little training on and prepare to utilize this. I know it's not ideal, um, but I think uh, it's, it's a relatively good tool, uh, given the circumstances. Uh, I want to thank our staff also for uh, the extra preparation. And in particular, I like, I like to single out Merrily Smith, uh, your planning commission secretary, who uh, put a tremendous amount of uh, effort and uh, thought and stress and worry into making sure that this uh, meeting would go off as, as well as possible. So, uh, thank you, Merrily.
Thank you.
I, I'd also like to thank staff for all their hard work in together this meeting and for the training and uh, guidance provided ahead and um, particularly Merrily as well. Um, any other comments from the commission or staff? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, I echo the, the comments on that. You know, I think tonight's the first time the Sparks Planning Commission has had one of its regular meetings that wasn't held inside Spark City Hall. So appreciate the staff. Merrily did a great job tonight reading those public comments and getting that. You know, certainly this is not an ideal situation. Appreciate the patience of the public um, and with, with us, and we hope to get back to normal as soon as possible. I'm also wanted to extend my appreciation to the Community Services Department staff in general. Um, you know, during these extraordinary times, working from home, continuing the essential services is really appreciated from me and uh, many of my, my neighbors. Um, and there's quite a few agencies that have just flat out closed down during this, this, this emergency. So I appreciate the city leadership and, and staff doing all that they do to keep, keep the city running. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any further comments? Let's um, back to public comment. Um, did we get any callers?
There are no callers.
All right, let's go ahead and close um, public comment, and um, I will call for this meeting to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I don't think you need a, a motion to adjourn. I think you have the discretion to call the meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
Great job tonight.
Thought that's what I did. Okay.
That is correct. Everybody just needs to leave the meeting.
All right, bye.
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 Relief, everybody. Bye.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks for relief.